One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in the black, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of Texas, one say, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you so much.
I'll get better.
Again, I want to welcome everyone here today to Commissioner's Court. Would someone in, you getting that Commissioner? Sorry. With that, we will go ahead and call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Angie, do we have any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
The thing is just called, we have a bunch of folks parking in their parking lot there on the land, so we should, if anyone's parking.
Okay. We've gotten word that our next-door neighbor is complaining of use of their parking lot. So, once we finish here, if anyone in the room is parked over in the next-door neighbor's parking lot, we appreciate the moving of the vehicles. Thank you very much.
That's Prosperity Bank's.
Prosperity Bank. Item number one, consider and take action from previously-held meeting of Commissioners' Court on April 23rd, 2019. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
Hearing then, Judge, I move we approve the minutes as presented for the Commissioners' Court regular session of April the 23rd, 2019.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Geisler, second by Commissioner McCam to approve the minutes as presented. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Item number two is a presentation by the Sons of the Republic of Texas. And with us today, we have, excuse me. Where'd Mr. Sequel go?
Moving his car.
Oh, he's moving his car.
I would pick up Prosperity Bank and tax evaluation time.
I tell you what, would you like to wait? We could move on to another item, but he's a part of that one. We could move to the fourth item, which is a proclamation, if y'all would like to wait until Mr. Sequel gets back.
Sure, we'll be happy to.
Let's do that. Okay. Well, item number four, we'll move to it, is consider and take action to proclaim May 2019 as Elder Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. And if you'll see in the audience, we have several individuals dressed in purple. And Ms. Quattlebaum, if you would, you have a proclamation for us? How about coming forward and reading that? But before you do, would you like to introduce who's here with you today?
Yes, do it. Again, my name is Misty Quattlebaum. I work for Adult Protective Services. Been there 12 years, worked both Henderson and Van Zand counties. We have some of our staff here. Anthony Brown, who works Van Zand, Anderson, and Henderson counties. He's been here for 12 years. Ms. Sonia Williams, who works both Henderson and Van Zand counties, who's been here two years. Ms. Kelly Curly, back there, who's our supervisor, who supervises Van Zand, Henderson, and Anderson counties. Mitzi Hughes is not here. She had a death in the family, so, but she works both Henderson and Van Zand counties as well. We have Ms. Stephanie Sonnier, who's our community engagement specialist. She goes out into the community and spreads the word about APS to all, you know, all the different counties in our region, which goes all the way up to Paris and Texarkana and just all over the place. So, and then we have our board members who support us and try to get the word out in the community and in Henderson County about what we do. So if they would please stand. They work for different home health agencies, different, just different members in our community who help, help us in what we do. So, they are a huge support for us.
We thank you all for your support in what you do. Before we have you read the proclamations, anything the court would wish to add to the comments?
Of course, I had an event, my sister, oldest sister was abused and she passed away. I was Commissioner in my last term, and some of you might remember, that was part of my reason not running again, because I had an older sister, wasn't able to be there, and she wouldn't admit it, you know, she cried, and we had to deal with some issues that were really difficult for me, living too far away from her. So, but anyway, I really appreciate what y'all do and what's going on. I'm astounded by some of these numbers that you have today, but thank you very much.
Commissioner Tulley?
I just thank y'all for what you do, day in and day out, year after year.
It's terrible that we live in a society where a couple of weeks ago, we had to do a child abuse proclamation, and now we have to come back and do an elder abuse proclamation. But we do live in those times, so thank y'all for everybody that gets out there and helps, tries to put a solution to these problems.
Commissioner Geisler?
Said a few weeks ago, when we approved the proclamation against child abuse, that there is a very strong linkage between child abuse and elder abuse. The two members of our society that do not have the ability to care for themselves, and therefore, in many cases, they are neglected. Neither one is worse than the other, but one that took care of one's mother for years to make sure that the proper care was given, I think it is probably much easier for our society to address this one and correct it quickly, because this should not be happening. It should not be happening. I strongly endorse anything and everything this county can do to wipe out elder abuse in this county. And as one of the commissioners said, the numbers are staggering, because they are growing. They are growing. So, thank you for what you do. I'm so pleased that we have folks in the county supporting both Anderson and Van Zand and Henderson that is addressing this serious issue. Thank you again.
Ms. Quattlebaum?
2019 proclamation declaring May as Elder Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, whereas people who are elderly or have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of Henderson County by helping to preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds. And whereas these residents are vital and integral members of our society, and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives. And whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country. And whereas Texas APS in-home caseworkers in Henderson County have completed 458 investigations, of which 256 cases of abuse, neglect, and/or exploitation were confirmed against our elderly Texans or those with disabilities in 2018. Whereas elder abuse is grossly under-reported because the elderly who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. And whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all cultural and ethnic groups, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some way, in poor neighborhoods and in suburbia. And whereas many of the cases investigated by Adult Protective Services in Texas involve self-neglect, and it is our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. Now therefore, I, the Honorable Judge Wade McKinney, and the Henderson County Commissioners' Court do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 to be Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Henderson County, and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce abuse and neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities, dated this 30th day of April 2019.
Thank you very much. Any further comments from the court? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
So, move to proclaim this month Elder Abuse Month in Henderson County.
I'd like to second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Geisler, second by Commissioner Thomas, to declare May 2019 as Elder Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. All those in favor? Item passes. There's two of them in there. If you'd sign them, please. Okay, we will move back to item two, which is presentation by the Sons of the Republic of Texas.
Representative Thor, Judge, and the audience. I've been a member of the Sons of the Republic of Texas for a couple of over 16 years now. Throughout that 16 years, we have always had the support of the Henderson County Commissioners' Court, recognizing and promoting the heritage and history of our beloved state of Texas. So I think it's totally appropriate that we come here today to recognize these gentlemen for their fervor, I would say, in helping us preserve the heritage and history of our beloved state. At this time, I would like to make presentations to each one of these gentlemen individually and as a courtesy.
I'll read the first one. The Sons of the Republic of Texas, James George, Chapter Number 59, proudly presents honorary membership to Judge Wayne McKinney in recognition of his outstanding service to the preservation of Texas history. No, I'm going to start on the one.
There you go. And I know you're probably eligible for regular membership, too.
What he talked to you about.
Commissioner Precinct One, Scotty Thomas.
Thank you very much. Very honored. We thank, we thank y'all.
Y'all thank y'all for all the support y'all have given us over a decade now.
Yes. And I know, I know that I was founding president of the chapter here in Athens, but I had been the president of the chapter in Tyler three years. And we even recognized the Sons of the Republic of Texas and our proud heritage over here during the term as president of the Tyler chapter. So, you know, we went and got special permission to do this from the second committee of the Sons of the Republic of Texas. And to my knowledge, y'all are the only group that has been recognized as such.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Precinct Two, Scott Tulley.
There you are, Commissioner.
Commissioner Precinct Three, Chuck McHale. And last, but not least. Precinct Four, Commissioner Ken Geisler.
And you know, Bill was helping me. He's also an honorary member of our chapter. His grandson is a junior member of our chapter. And one thing, invite y'all to come to any of our meetings, get into discussions, what we're doing. We'll be glad to have you. And if you, if I can, I will talk to the, get y'all's email address, and I can email you when we're having meetings and what's happening with Sons, for this chapter.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Yeah, we're honored. I tell you, that's an honor.
Like I said, it's our honor. It's our honor to be able to do this, to recognize each one for their service to the community and the state. Thank you very much.
That's a beautiful plaque, I tell you. It's really nice. Can't wait to put that right there where it belongs in my office.
Commissioner Tulley?
I thank you guys very much in helping protect our heritage. I have great respect for y'all, so thank you very much.
Commissioner McKinney?
I'm gonna go along with Commissioner Tulley, just thank you, and I think it's very, very important to protect the knowledge of our heritage.
One thing I always say, if none of us did the...
Commissioner Geisler?
Ditto, ditto, ditto. But in addition, we live in a world today that seems to attempt on a regular basis to rewrite history. I'm so pleased that we have an organization right here in Henderson County that is preserving the history and coming to Commissioners' Court on a regular basis and reminding us of the battles that were fought and the lives that were lost to preserve this republic and the freedoms we enjoy in this country. Without that, we would be living in a totally different country. Thank you for everything you do and all of your other members that participate, and thank you for the award.
I would like to ask a question. Do they still teach Texas history in the school systems? They do?
Yes, I'm, my daughter, I'm a proud father of a daughter that teaches Texas history. In Eustace, I S D.
Well, it is. Everything that's been said here is, means a great deal. Our history is our legacy, and it also gives context to our present. And it is so crucial that we continue to pass that message forward and pass it down, because that's our identity. That's what gives us our structure of government that we have here in the state of Texas. Learning that history will tell you why we are set up the way we are. And we are deeply honored, and we thank you. With that, we'll move on to item three, if there's not any further comments. Item three, consider and take action to proclaim May 4th, 2019 as Firefighter Appreciation Day. Mr. Sequel?
First of all, congratulations on your honorary membership. We're also members of, we're members of several different historical societies. Another society that we represent is the Southern American Revolution, which means that not only do we have patriot ancestors that helped start Texas, but we have patriot ancestors that helped start this country. We have between, I think the three of us, we probably have close to 10 patriot ancestors that were involved in the, in the American Revolution. And in our society, we have a saying that we honor our patriot ancestors by recognizing today's young patriots and heroes. And that's what we're here today for, to honor a group of patriots and heroes. And with your permission, I'd like to read the proclamation.
Please do.
Whereas brave firefighters all across Henderson County protect the life and property of our residents through fire response, medical emergencies, fire prevention, code enforcement, and public safety, fire education. And whereas firefighters must retain their composure in a variety of emergency situations while fulfilling requirements for the task at hand, no matter how routine, complex, or dangerous. And whereas many firefighters extend their training to specialty areas and serve as members of hazmat, rope rescue, swift water rescue teams. And whereas firefighters bravely face possible injury and even death in the performance of their duties, working long and strenuous hours to safeguard the lives and property of the citizens and visitors of Henderson County. And whereas May 4th is observed around the world as Firefighters' Day. Now therefore, we county judge and commissioners of Henderson County do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2019 as Firefighter Appreciation Day in Henderson County, Texas, and call for all citizens to join the Sons of the American Revolution and extend our appreciation to those dedicated and brave enough to don the equipment.
Comments?
I'd like to, you know, of course, you always think of firefighters responding to a fire when it's really, it seemed like this is what we always think about. Of course, they've responded to a lot of different things, and it's always amazing to me how they want to do that. A lot of them are not paid. They're doing, they're heroes to me. I had a flooded road at one point, and I was, had a car that had driven off into flooded road, and I'd pulled up, and I was thinking, what am I gonna do? Gotta do something. Here come the fire department with a swift rescue, and they had a little boat, and they jumped out and went out and basically saved these people from getting washed away. I would never forget what, and it was in the middle of the night, couldn't see, you know, we had our headlights on trying to help them, but it was just unbelievable that what they did that night and the things they do, not just put out fires, and how brave and heroes to me.
Send them in action with the boots on the ground, and what they do as a volunteer firefighter is, is amazing for people to go out and do it for free and do it for their community. I have a father-in-law that put in 34 years of fire service to the Dallas Fire Department, so that they're a special, a special breed of people. I believe we have a, Ms. Sharon Strickland's in the audience today, and her husband just retired from the Dallas Fire Department and...
And father-in-law worked with you.
Oh, and father-in-law. So, these are brave people that get up and leave a lot of meals that they eat cold and take time away from their family, like last night of having training areas. So, I commend you for recognizing a, an American hero that's a firefighter and anybody that does don the equipment, because I've been labeled the water boy, because I ain't putting on that suit to fight that fire. I'm bringing the water to the, to the fire, so.
I've always had a great respect for, my next-door neighbor was a volunteer firefighter. He'd wake me up at all times of the night when he cranked his pickup up to go to, go to the fire, or not just to fire, but first responder. But until I got in this position that I'm in right now, I didn't know how much they were out. And I've, I've got a new view of the amount of time they spend out on the road. Just in the last couple of weeks with the storms we had around the Chandler area, I've been out on the road at 2:00 in the morning with firefighters that were out there doing it, because that's what they wanted to do. They wanted to serve the public. And they spend a lot of time away from the family, away from the wife, away from their home. A lot of it is thankless, but I've seen them save lives, keeping people from driving through high water. Those trees that fall down in the middle of the night, and they're gone the next morning, somebody came and got, somebody from the fire department in most cases came and got that tree. You never even knew it was there. So, thank you for everything you do, and I'm like Scotty, you're my heroes to...
Commissioner Geisler?
Boy, that's a tough act to follow after those three comments. I think this proclamation is extremely important for a different reason. It's recognizing the heroes, as my contemporaries have said already. But at the same time, we're having a very hard time. All of the volunteer fire departments within Henderson County is having a very hard time recruiting new firefighters, and we have to get our younger folks involved in serving their community like many have done for the last 100 years, because a lot of our firefighters are getting older. They're gonna be looking to your organization to make sure that they're not abused. We need to emphasize, and I have stated in this court a couple, three months ago, anything that we can put in the paper and advertise for volunteers to our volunteer fire department is of utmost importance for our security, not just because of weather-related incidents, because of, but because of automobile accidents they respond to, because of the fires they respond to, and the list goes on. And as the commissioners have already stated, not many people realize, until they dial 911, that's a volunteer coming to help you. So, this proclamation is very, very fitting for this time. And I thank our fire marshal was out there, and thank you for all that you do in working with the volunteers. It's all I can come up with after following my esteemed colleagues.
Well, I'd like to say thank you to the Sons of the American Revolution for bringing this forward, this proclamation forward, and helping all to recognize everything that's been said here today. So, thank you. With that, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Second. Third.
Motion made by Commissioner Geisler, second by Commissioner Tulley, to proclaim May 4th as National Firefighters' Day in Henderson County. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Thank you. Item five, consider and take action on request to accept a $2,500 grant from the Texas Book Festival awarded to the Henderson County Library.
Good morning. In January, the library submitted a request to the Texas Book Festival. Essentially, we promised if they would send us $2,500, we would use the money to buy children's books. They have sent me the check for $2,500, so I think we should accept it, and I will buy children's books.
Questions, comments?
It's a good job for applying for that grant and going through the steps. That was not easy, I'm sure, to do that, but great job.
Thank you.
It did, it looked like quite an extensive application.
Yeah, I read through it, wow. Very difficult.
Any other comments?
No. Just congratulations on the hard work and being able to get us another grant.
Happy to do it.
It's always exciting to see a grant that has an Austin address on it.
Instead of the other way around. Any further comments? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I was already voting for it.
I'll make a motion that we accept the $2,500 grant from the Texas Book Festival awarded to our Henderson County Library.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner McCam to accept the $2,500 grant from the Texas Book Festival for the Henderson County Library. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you very much. Item number six, consider and take action on delinquent tax resale resolution.
Good morning. What we have for you is a resolution to offer all of the properties that were previously bid and trust to Henderson County up for tax resale. There are 29 properties on this list. If you all pass, approve and pass this resolution, they'll be offered for resale on June 4th of this year. The bid, the resolution does authorize no minimum bid, but we do set a minimum bid in an attempt to get it started. Where we don't receive that, then we do reduce the bid and just take open bids from the public. These are all the properties that have been bid and trust up to this point.
And these are going on auction, not the first time? This is not the first time?
No, this is the second time. They've been offered once and didn't receive the minimum bid that's required by statute, and so, once you all pass this resolution, that's how we can offer them for less.
June, what was the date again? June?
June 4th at 10:00.
June 4th.
Questions? Commissioner Tulley? McCam? Commissioner Geisler? Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the delinquent tax resale resolution. tax resale resolution with the judge's authorization signed?
The sheriff signs.
Sheriff signs. All those in favor?
Should, should the motion have second offering since these are all going up the second time?
Well, that, it says tax resale, so that I would think qualifies for it.
Okay.
Okay.
These are properties all over the county too. They're not in one precinct. They're scattered.
They're scattered. And most of these were bid and trust in 2018. There were two that were bid and trust in 2017, but most have been bid and trust within the last year.
I got it. I know we've got four for. Commissioner Tulley, did you vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe I seconded the motion.
Oh, you did second. Sorry. Item number seven, consider and take action on fiscal year 2020 budget calendar. Gentlemen, you'll find in the packet a calendar that we put together for the coming budget year. Kind of lays out what our process is going to be. This is meant as a tool to keep us on path because of all of the different requirements that we have to meet with publishing, getting our budgets together. This lays out pretty much the process. We have some, we will have a little bit of room in September there depending on what we do as far as the, the final dollar amounts are, on how many hearings we have to have and when we have to have the actual vote. So, this is a roadmap and I'm looking for if the court does seem fit to follow this. That way, it will go out to our departments to help them along the path as well. Be happy to answer any questions. I want to thank Commissioner Giesel for his help in putting this together. This is very pretty. The audience will have a copy of it for you to see later on, but it's, it's done very well and we appreciate the efforts of Commissioner in this process.
I, I do have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I was, I was reading yesterday the email that came from Texas Association of Counties, which is the monthly magazine called County Progress, and there's a whole section dedicated basically to this calendar process. So, I thought it was quite apropos that we're adopting this program, the calendar this year, and Texas Association of Counties is now sending it out to all 254 counties saying, you know, this is the way it really should be done and here's a, here's a calendar example. So, I, I thought the timing of having this on the agenda today was just perfect.
Couldn't agree more. With that, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Giesel, second by Commissioner Tulley to approve the fiscal year 2020 budget calendar. All those in favor? And again, the item passes and again, this will be sent out today. Audit Office is ready to go. Lynn is with this and the budget letter and all the instructions. So, department heads, it'll be coming to you rather quickly.
Oh, boy.
Because we're, we're already looking at a May 21st deadline on getting our budget requests back in. So, with that, we'll move on to item eight, which is consider and take action to transfer of a dynamo labor printer, label printer from surplus to human resources. Ms. Nicholson? Are we, are we ever going to run out of these printers?
We have 10 left, so...
10 left.
Yeah. And this is the same as all the ones before. There's surplus left from the elections office. We have, once this one's approved, then we should have, we only have 10 left.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Nicholson?
The next one's that won't one transfer. You need to make sure they get two.
Two. I try. I'm trying. I really am.
Well, you might want to talk with the sheriff and, you know, we have this delinquent property sale coming up, so we could auction them off on the courthouse steps along with the properties. We might bring in some, they, they seem to be such a popular item.
Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Thomas to approve the transfer of a dynamo label printer from surplus to the Human Resources Department. All those in favor? Item passes. Item nine, consider and take action on Eustace ISD tax resale deeds in Oak Hill Park subdivision lots 25, 26, 27, 28, 30, 31, 34, 35, 36, 37, and 38 located in precinct one. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, Court. These are some properties that had similar to last week's court. They're Eustace ISD properties that have been on the tax rolls or back taxes that have not been paid. There's some properties, I went and looked at them yesterday. Actually, Ms. Montgomery went with me to look at these properties and they're overgrown. They're, they're just sitting there and they've been sitting there with not taxes being paid. There's, they're right there at a log cabin and, and I think it would be great that what Eustace ISD is doing is, is cleaning up their books and getting these back on the tax rolls. So, I'm in much favor of these properties getting resettled.
For y'all that don't know, this is Lauren Montgomery.
I'm Lauren Montgomery.
She's with Limebarger. Any questions for Ms. Montgomery? How about, how about Commissioner Thomas?
I have a deal that I just want to tell you. Send back to Eustace ISD as being a former school board member and seeing properties on the, not on the tax roll, making money for the county or the school district. I want to commend Eustace ISD for the job that they're doing. And please send that back to Dr. Hoakman.
Absolutely.
Any further questions or comments? If not, entertain a motion.
Well, thank you, Ms. Montgomery, working with me on this. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Eustace ISD, Eustace, Eustace, don't you say that, Eustace?
It's hard. It's a lot harder than the ballot.
ISD. Crossroads. USD/ISD tax resale deeds for Oak Hill Park subdivision lots 25, 26, 27, 28, 30, 31, 34, 35, 36, 37, and 38 located precinct one.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Tulley to approve the tax resale deeds for the above-mentioned lots. Any further comments? All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you, Lord.
Lauren, there's about another 40 left. Is that right?
Well, we've got about 30 to 40 that just got sent to Eustace ISD last week and we actually have 95 right behind that. So, quite a few coming.
Okay. Because you had said a number like 70 something, so there was more behind, there was more behind the 73 or 8 that you mentioned.
I'm actually running a new list to figure out exactly what we have left, but they're going fast.
Boy. If they'd had got all of these back on the tax roll earlier, they might not have had to ask for a bond.
Yes, sir.
And it takes time to go out. I've put my eyes on these, you know, so I'm having to drive out there, spend a little time, find them, and they're not that easy to find sometimes. And so, she has offered to go with me to help me find these and that's been the key is, is locating these lots.
It's very helpful for the...
It is.
And I know for the public to understand why so many parcels and lots, you have to understand that many of the subdivisions that were created in the late 60s, early 70s, many of them have 50 by 100 lots.
Or smaller.
Or smaller.
Yes.
And a lot of the, many of these are those type of lots. And so, there's a great number of them out there. And when you have these school districts that are bordering the lakes, they have a ton of these parcels. And we just appreciate the effort of Eustace and Limebarger for the work that they've done on this. Did we vote on this yet?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10, receive financial reports. Thanks, sir. We have financial reports from Justice of the Peace Precinct 2. Now, I remind everyone these will be for viewing after court in the county clerk's office. Item 11, consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets. Judge Bynum?
Judge, we have no payroll distributions or accounts cash sheets or stuff.
Thank you, sir. Item 12, consider and take action on submitted contracts.
I have no contracts.
Thank you, ma'am. 13, item 13, consider and take action on requests for right-of-way permits.
Precinct 3.
Precinct 3. Commissioner McCam?
I have one in precinct 3 and from Leagueville Water Supply. It's a road board, 2-inch PVC schedule for the casing, County Road 3614. And it's just coming, it's a road board to set up a new meter. We have 2-inch, 2-inch casing with 1-inch length.
Questions for Commissioner McCam? If not, entertain a motion.
So I'm led to the motion.
Second is motion.
Was it your authority to sign?
Yes, it was my authority to sign.
Motion.
Decided to get that one. Prove there.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Giesel to approve the right-of-way request from Leagueville Water Supply Corporation on County Road 3614 with Commissioner McCam's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes. Do we have any others? Thank you. Item 14, consider, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments.
Yes, y'all should have received these last week. One for the library. She's requested that longevity might be moved so that she can do a little bit more extra work at the center.
For part-time, yeah.
Any other questions?
No questions yet.
Commissioner Tulley?
No, sir.
With that, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Giesel, second by Commissioner Thomas to approve the budget amendments as presented. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 15, consider, consider and take action on payment of bills.
Yes, this morning I have two sets I need approval on. And first, I have the first quarter state fees for $164,338.31.
Questions concerning the state fees?
No questions, Judge.
Well, if there are no questions, entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Giesel, second by Commissioner McCam to approve the first quarter state fees. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Item passes.
The bill total this week is $108,043.63.
Commissioner Thomas?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tulley?
None at this time.
Commissioner McCam?
I have no question.
Commissioner Giesel?
The only thing that should be pointed out is that, to the Sheriff's Department, the county attorney and I, as along with purchasing, renegotiated the proposed lease on the Larue Tower. Price has gone up from what we were paying, but not as high as they were asking for. So, therefore, in the bills, there's the increase for March and April and then the new ongoing amount for May. So, it is more than we had paid, but the contract hadn't been renegotiated since around 2006, I believe. So, we've been paying the same amount without any escalations. So, it was long overdue.
Yeah. Well, it is significantly lower than what was originally proposed.
That is correct.
And we appreciate that effort. Any further questions?
No other questions or comments, Judge.
I had one, and this is concerning the Law Library. Is the, the billing based upon usage or a flat monthly rate?
It's a flat monthly rate.
Okay. It was just the description threw me that. It said DA March online.
Yeah, that's just how it comes in on the bill, but it's for all of them.
Because it's actually one of the, it's one of the responsibilities tied through the DA's office with the...
Not really.
Not really.
It's the description that comes in the bill.
Okay. All right. Any further questions from the court? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Giesel, second by Commissioner Tulley to approve the bills as presented. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes. Item 16, consider and take action on submitted plots.
We have one in precinct 3.
I have one in precinct 3. It is, each one of y'all had a copy in front of y'all, The Enchanted Pines on Lake Palestine, Phase 2. We did the Phase 1 about 10 months ago. This is Phase 2. Mr. Drew Douglas is here. If anybody has any questions with him. All fees have been paid. All signatures accompany the document. This is the continuation of Phase 1 with the, or seven lots, I believe, wasn't it?
Preliminary plot.
Preliminary. I'm not familiar with the lot sizes on requirements on Lake Palestine. I know on Cedar Creek, the lot's a one acre. Are we in, are these in compliance?
That's correct. My consultant's out of here recently, Bellman, in weeks.
Okay.
He made a couple recommendations, a couple concerns about size. There's a couple things each week from the plan that I had heard repeated before I've been on this report.
Okay.
It's identical to the Phase 1 discussion of the size of the bigger.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Questions from the court?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
The Enchanted Pines on Lake Palestine plot, filed for purposes only.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Thomas to approve the Enchanted Pines on Lake Palestine, Phase 2, for filing purposes only. All those in favor? Item passes. Any other plots?
Got a question.
Thank you. Item 17, open and consider bids.
Last week I brought to, or sorry, week before last, I brought to the court the responses for the aggregate road material bids. There were some clarifications that you guys had asked for, so we went back to the vendors and got those responses, the clarifications of the locations from which they... and got those responses, the clarifications of the locations from which they would be getting the materials. And so I resent the spreadsheet with that added information to you guys, so we just need a vote so that we can move forward with the bid award.
Questions, discussion?
Looks good to me, mine. Good, ones I'm concerned about.
Did everyone get the summation?
Yes.
That Ms. Nicholson sent out yesterday? For the audience's knowledge, this is quite an extensive amount of material and items.
Yes, sir, it's in it last one day and again yesterday. The first tab of the spreadsheet shows it by each vendor, what they bid, what items and the amounts and where those hits are. The second spreadsheet shows...
She said yesterday and next week.
The second spreadsheet shows it by material.
I like the way you did that for me. Made it easy for me. See, I don't know. There they are. Look at them that way. Look at them. You're saying down there?
Under that second tab of material price only, you have them broken into material category?
Yes, sir. The first category is flex base. The second one is iron ore. Next one's pea gravel, and it goes straight down the lines.
Well, there's one, two, three, four, five different flex bases. Grades one and two. Non-state grade, one inch, and an inch and three quarters. All seem to be of that, seem to be easily awardable.
That's completely up to the court.
Because there were single bidders for those. It would be the flex base, no spec, where the discussion would have to take place in this one category.
Yeah.
Right. I don't know who DM Contractors it is, that's not...
They're out of Van Zandt County.
Van Zandt County?
They're out of where?
Van Zandt County.
They're out of Van Zandt County, clearly new. I think they've only been there a couple...
I'm not familiar with them.
Gentlemen, have it. That's the best way I know.
It's nice to see more companies come.
Yeah.
It is. Addressing the flex base, no specs, gentlemen, how would you like to proceed? There is the option of designating a primary and secondary in that particular item.
Three of them is my possibilities. The first three, I don't know the third and fourth one, but the first three, I've used all three of those. I'd like to see those all go.
Which, which three are we talking about?
On the flex base, no specs.
Oh, okay. King Sand and Gravel.
King, S and S, and that used to be, I don't know who that, Arcosa. It used to be another, another name.
They were, but I...
Can't remember the name.
Yeah, I don't want to state incorrectly.
We have a consensus? We're going to click through the, we'll take individual motions so that we can keep...
Get through.
Keep it through line. Is anyone that wishes to make a motion concerning flex base, no spec?
I don't have a problem with any, all four of them. Can we use, I don't know the one, the green dream, but the first three, I'd like to... Have him to make that motion, or I don't know about the fourth one. Somebody needs it out.
Just on the dollar amount, I would think...
Yeah, I know, it's a little bit up there. I'd like to make a motion on the flex base, no specs, that we go with the King Sand and Gravel, S and S Trucking, and Arcosa aggregates. It's the three main for flex base, no specs.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner McCam, to award flex base, no spec bid to King Sand and Gravel, S and S Trucking, and Arcosa aggregates. All those in favor? Item passes.
Now, do we have to set a primary or secondary?
I don't believe we do.
Yes.
We don't have to, we can, but we don't have to.
Flex base, state grade one, flex base, non-state grade, non-state rig base, and flex base one inch or less, and flex base one and three quarter are all single bidders.
Yes.
We have a motion accepting those? That is, gentlemen, if that's what you wish to do.
I don't use flex base, inch and three quarters, but the commissioners may.
Does anybody use one inch or less?
I think so, I think we do.
But I just use a grade one or two.
It's fine with me.
Anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept those. Bidders on flex base, state base, grade one and two, flex base, non-state regulated base, flex base, one inch or less, and flex base, one and three quarter.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Thomas, to award Titan Transport for grade one and two, Titan Transport for flex base, non-state rig, D and M Contractors for one inch or less, and the one and three-quarter inch flex base. All those in favor? Item passes. Thoughts?
Well, needless to say, I want primary to be East Texas Crush Rock with Titan Trucking as the hauler if desired. I've never bought any iron ore from D and M Contractors, so...
I haven't either, so...
We need a secondary.
Pretty high.
It's kind of high up there, yes.
Twice the cost.
Will we entertain a motion?
I move that we award the contract for iron ore to East Texas Crush Rock and trucking to Titan Transport.
I'll second that motion.
I'm pausing for...
Yeah, we can pick it up there, too. We don't have...
Pick it up at East Texas Crush Rock.
We can pick it up, yes. Yeah, that's why we're going to...
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, second by Commissioner McCam, to award iron ore to East Texas Crush Rock and trucking to S and S Trucking.
No, Titan.
Titan, excuse me, pardon, thank you. Any further comments? Entertain a motion, I mean, all in favor? Item passes. Next item is pea gravel. You have a no spec and a three-eighths.
Again, I'd like King Sand and Gravel and S and S Trucking to be my, and Arcosa aggregates are right there, too.
Yeah, Arcosa, we can pick it up.
Yes.
Wanting to award to King, S and S, and Arcosa?
Yes, I would.
Entertain a motion?
That's my motion.
What is, okay, that's just on the no spec?
Yes.
No spec pea gravel.
We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Tootley, to award pea gravel no spec to King Sand and Gravel and S and S Trucking and Arcosa aggregates. All those in favor? You for, Commissioner?
Yeah.
In favor? Item passes. Pea gravel, three-eighths. Only one option, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Tootley, second by Commissioner McCam, to award three-eighths pea gravel to Titan Transportation. All those in favor? Item passes. Next item, sand, no spec.
Judge, I move we award East Texas Sand and Gravel and Ronnie Smith for sand, no
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tootley, second by Commissioner Thomas, to award the sand no spec bid to Ronnie Smith and East Texas Sand and Gravel. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes.
I move we use Titan Transportation and Arcosa, concrete sand.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tootley, to award to Titan Transportation and Arcosa aggregates for concrete sand. All those in favor? Item passes. The next three are single bidders. Sand coarse concrete, sand clean fill, and sand, King Sand road material.
The next one's also... The King, the King Sand road material is a King mix that they make for us, or they make, not just for us, but it's a product we use. Definitely want to keep it.
Do we wish to award to all bidders in those three categories since there was one bidder?
I would like to, if it's our, with the court, make a motion that we award the sand coarse concrete, sand clean fill, and sand King road material, sand road material as single bidders.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner McCam, to award King Sand and Gravel the sand coarse concrete, sand clean fill, and the sand King and Gravel road material. All those in favor? Item passes. The next three are also single bidders. First one up is Rip Wrap, three-eighths. And they're all to the same one, so Wrap, three-eighths, May Screening Number One, and Screenings, all bid by Arcosa aggregates. Entertain a motion?
I move we award Rip Wrap Base Screenings, one, and Screenings to Arcosa.
Do we have a second?
I'll second this motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Geislin, to award to Arcosa aggregates, Rip Wrap, three-eighths, Base Screening One, and Screenings. All those in favor? Item passes.
I believe that's all of them.
Is that all of them?
I believe so.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholson. Thank you, Court. Thank you, public, for sitting through that sausage-making process. Everything signed up on your end except for this?
Everything but that one.
Having everything signed and everyone's eyes crossing, item eighteen, consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
I will second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tootley, second by Commissioner Thomas, to adjourn. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you all for being here with us.